Good morning. Welcome to the May 12, 2020 meeting, a virtual meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to advise everyone that's watching that you can still participate in our meeting by dialing 785-621-0800. You must enter the participant code of 782-956, followed by the pound. If you so wish to speak to Commissioners during public comment or at any other time that we have public comment accepted, you then would dial *9 and you will go to our Administrator, Mr. Philip Smith Haynes, and he will unmute you and pass you into the meeting. At this time, I would ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weiss?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here. I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll now move to the Citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, items that are not on today's agenda, and is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, well, hang on just a second, we do have a slight delay.
There's no one online this morning.
Okay, there is no one online. There is sometimes a 45-second delay, so we do need to pause from time to time if I don't get ahead of myself. We'll move to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. The consent agenda is approval of prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, and approval of the public forum agenda as presented. Are there any Commissioners who wish to withdraw or make amendments to any of these items?
Nope.
Hearing none?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say, do we need to do a call to order?
I've done that.
He did that.
Did we? Okay.
Thought I did.
All right. Okay, excuse me. All right, yep, excuse me. All right.
Let's see. Okay, at this point, hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand approved as presented. We will move to action items, which, item number one, and that is an RFA 162-20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant with Lieutenant Jeremiah Hayes from the Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Hayes?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This RFA is an approval for the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant. On March 30, the Department of Justice released solicitation funds nationwide to prepare, help agencies prepare, prevent, for the coronavirus. Total funds nationwide was $850 million. For the state of Kansas, there was $3,203,026 that was allocated for the state. Of that, Celine County was allocated $58,008. The Sheriff's Office applied for the grant on April 28, and we were awarded the grant on May 4. The grant would be used for purchasing personal protection equipment for staff, inmates, and civilians that staff come in contact with, also medical supplies for the Sheriff's Office and the Celine County Jail, and medical equipment also for the Sheriff's Office and the Celine County Jail. The Celine County Sheriff's Office would request permission to accept the awarded funds. Alternatives for action would be approve request for action or do not approve request for action.
All right. It's always been my policy personally to accept free money, which it appears that this is. So, other comments from Commissioners or questions? If not, is there any public comment?
There is no one on the line.
Okay, at this point, I would take a motion from a Commissioner, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the DOJ Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant as presented by staff.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 162-20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Lieutenant, and we appreciate your hard work over there and the fact that everybody's on the front line and hanging with it. So, thanks so much for your efforts and whoever put forth this effort to get the grant of $58,008. So, thanks so much. Thank you. We will move to item number two, which is RFA 162-20 bid award for 2020 inmate transport van with a wheelchair lift with Captain Stan Fruits from the Sheriff's Office. Good morning, Captain.
Good morning. The Sheriff's Office is requesting to purchase a 2020 inmate transport van with a wheelchair lift. This will replace a 2014 Dodge Caravan that has 228,000-some miles on it. And to give you a little more information on the reason why, we have just regular vans throughout the transport fleet, the transport prisoners wherever. We have, on occasion, where we had an inmate that needed to be using a wheelchair, whether it's due to sickness, injury, whatever it may be, our practice was that we would assist them into the van and transport them wherever, and that's worked okay. Sometimes we had to lift them into the van, which you can see that may kind of propose a little danger there of accidentally dropping somebody. And for people that, you know, that we may need to transport that we cannot handle, we have to get an ambulance to come and pick them up and take them wherever they need to go. So, we felt that there was a need to have a wheelchair lift in one of our vans, and the van that, you know, that I put out for bid, it'll be capable of hauling six extra regular inmates plus a wheelchair lift. So, it won't be just sitting in the parking lot until we need the wheelchair lift, we'll be able to use it for other transports. We sent bids out to three businesses. Kansas Truck Company had a Wichita, Lawn MacArthur here in Salina, and Marshall Motors here in Salina. We got the bids back. The lowest bid was from Kansas Truck Company in a Wichita for $63,131. We will be using the 2020 EIP, and Kansas Truck Company doesn't take a trade, so we'd have to put our minivan that we were going to use to trade on Purple Wave to sell it.
Okay, my question is, on these transport vans with the lift and so forth, do we transport any prisoners out of county to the jails that house some of our out-of-county prisoners? Do we ever transport someone who has a disability or in need for this unit?
Not that I'm aware of. Usually with inmates that we either have problems with or have major medical issues, we keep them in-house, so they're right there.
I would have assumed as much, because, I mean, the other counties don't want to accept your issues.
That's correct.
So, are there other questions of Captain Fruits from Commissioners?
One question, Captain. There's quite a discrepancy between the bids, almost 30%. Do you know what caused that?
I'm not 100% sure, but the way I read through the bids is that Kansas Truck and Equipment, they're taking a van that is the same size as what vans we have, they're a 3/4-ton transit van with windows in them. They're going to take that type of van and they're going to transform it into where we can haul six regular inmates, then they'll have a separate cage for the wheelchair lift, and they'll install a wheelchair lift. They're using a name brand lift, which is made by Braun. They're known all throughout the U.S. And with Lawn Macarthur's, they're going to, their bid was going to use a van like ours, same size, but they were going to buy a insert, and I think it was from Bob Barker, which is a self-contained inmate transport with a wheelchair lift in it. So, and I could see where that would be quite a bit more money.
Are there further questions? Is there any public comment regarding this RFA?
There's nobody on the telephone bridge. I thought we might have somebody.
And there's no one outside, so Linda says. So, at this point, I would take a motion from a Commissioner, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Kansas Truck Equipment Company for a 2020 Ford Transit Van with wheelchair lift in the amount of $63,000, or, in $131.
I second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 162-20 bid award for a 2020 inmate transport van with a wheelchair lift. Are there any further questions or comments from Commissioners? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
I'll ask you one quick question. What is the delivery date or do you have a?
It'd be 180 days.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll move to item number three, which is RFA 163-20 bid award for a 2020 police SUV with Captain Jim Hughes from the Sheriff's Office.
Morning, Commissioners.
So, good morning to you, Captain.
Hi, I'm here today to revisit a RFA that was in front of you previously, I think it was early March, to request a 2020 police SUV. And this vehicle would replace the current civil process vehicle, that is a 2007 Crown Victoria that now has over 101,000 miles on it. This vehicle will be unmarked, however, it will have the lights and sirens and be equipped like all of our other patrol vehicles. This vehicle is primarily used by our civil process deputy. However, our civil process deputy is often a force multiplier for the Operations Division. They routinely come out to high-profile calls for service. In the past, they've come out to active violence calls in some of our rural schools. They help us with pursuits. They've helped us with officer-involved shootings, other high-profile calls. So, it's important this car is equipped basically like our operations car, because it is a great force multiplier for us. I've attached the bids. They're the same information you had last time in front of you. Marshall Motors was the lowest bid, and they submitted a bid of $51,939, including the trade-in of the Crown Victoria. I did speak with Marshall Motors, and they will continue to honor the bid that they submitted previous. And the recommendations from the Sheriff's Office is to accept the low bid of the SUV for Marshall Motors in the amount of $51,939. That includes trade-in. The money for this, the budget impact, there was money in the 2020 pre-approved EIP funds, which had a current balance of $106,268 prior to Captain Fruits before me.
Other questions from Commissioners?
One question. You said prior to the last purchase that we approved?
Yes. When this RFA was drafted, there was $106,268 in the EIP funds. And so, if we would take, subtract, I guess, what you approved, Captain Fruits, I wouldn't privy to all of that, and then that would, the balance would be whatever was approved for him minus that, minus that from that $106,000.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, it does. So, that's pretty much going to zero out that account.
That's going to zero it out. We did have to take some extra money out of it to cover the expenses for the crashed vehicle I was in front of you last week about.
And I assume that this is a Durango?
Yes, sir. Yeah, 2020 police package Durango.
That's all I had.
I'm still somewhat apprehensive to, because of the position of this vehicle, but I'm not going to get up against it too far. I would ask Philip Smith Haynes, our Administrator, to weigh in on this if you have a thought or from an administrative standpoint on zeroing out this, this is pretty early in the year to zero out a equipment fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, County Commissioner Philip Smith Haynes. So, I guess, I agree, we're not quite halfway through the year. I know it seems early in the year, but this is the middle of May already. So, I can appreciate that standpoint, that, you know, something might come up later in the year. On the other hand, the way that the EIP is constructed is you have, you know, vehicles that are planned purchases, and, you know, I just received a text from Deputy Administrator Hannah Stanbaugh, who has reviewed the balance and said, you know, she believes that that balance is good to make these purchases. So, you know, I agree with you, but I also think, you know, this is the reason that you all approved that amount in the budget as well, so.
And thank you. And that's kind of the answer that I was looking for, that the EIP budget line is not for emergencies. I mean, there's other funding sources to, if we do need to come up against something where it's a crashed vehicle or whatever. These, the EIP is a planned budget line item with planned purchases from the prior year to go to the organization that is so requesting those. So, are there any other comments from Commissioners or questions? Is there any public comment?
There's no one on the line, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's no one on the line, and there is no one from outside that wishes to comment on this. At this point in time, I would ask for some action from the Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for the 2020 police SUV to Marshall Motors in the amount of $51,939 with trade-in.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 163-20 bid award for a 2020 police SUV. Further comments? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Captain. Again, I'll ask you, like I did Captain Fruits, do you have a planned time of arrival to put this unit into action?
When I spoke with Alex from Marshall Motors late last week, middle last week, he was anticipating August of 2020.
Wow. And I assume that the delays on that are because of the extra added equipment and things like that that have to go in, or does that come after we get delivery of the unit?
The equipment should be arriving now until the vehicle arrives, and then in August, they should be able to put everything together. I know the motor vehicle plant was shut down for a period of time, and I believe, don't quote me on this, it opened up last week for the manufacturing of the vehicles. So, I know there was a delay in that due to COVID.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I apologize to my fellow Commissioners for asking the question out of order there. We shouldn't get the questions out of order before we, out of the way, before we take the vote and all that, so my apologies. We'll move to item number four, which is RFA 164-20 mosquito surveillance pilot project with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. So, prior to the COVID issue, we were approached by KDHE to participate with them and USDA as well in a pilot project for mosquito surveillance in this area. Historically, up till now, data that we have used to look at mosquito activity, including any type of diseases such as West Nile that mosquitoes carry, has just been, data that has been collected from other Sentinel sites that are not in this region, and then just trying to transpose it over to say this is what we assume the risk is in this area. This project will be, the trap and everything will be provided, it'll all be set up. Our requirement is to go out every once or, one or two weeks, collect all the mosquitoes, and ship those to KDHE. In return, they will provide us data and information, not only to the county, but to the region that's more specific about the types of mosquitoes that are in this area that are being found, and any type of mosquito-borne diseases that are found in those mosquitoes. This project, they provide $1,000 to us to cover the expenses of the time and the mileage to drive out to collect these mosquitoes, and then through their FedEx account is how we will ship it, so there's no cost to us for shipping these specimens up to the KDHE lab. This project runs from May 31 of this year to September 19. Alternatives for action, Commissioner and Chairman sign the contract and allow the program to proceed. Chairman does not sign the contract, and the project, of course, doesn't proceed, or you can send it back for more information. We recommend at this time, since this is a good opportunity for us to have information that we have not ever had before in this region specific to us, we recommend signing the contract and allowing us to proceed with the project. This project, as far as budget impact, was not something that was funded within our budget for 2020 when we submitted it, but expenses should be covered by the project funds provided.
I find it a little bit amusing, I don't mean to make light of our pandemic and the COVID-19, that we're on a mosquito hunt right now and that your office has time, but on the other hand, life does go on. So, it sounds like an interesting development that they're getting ready, one more step in their process, too. So, are there any questions from Commissioners or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. You stated it's a pilot project?
Correct.
But this is nothing new.
All the, as far as it being new in the sense that new to our region, and with a new kind of trap that is being used other than the Sentinel sites that's already in place, but as far as mosquito surveillance, no. Mosquito surveillance has been going on in this state for quite a long time.
I appreciate that. I have a small business RV park, and that was in '76, and I still remember whether it was the local health department or the state with the cute little tent traps set up in the trees, so, to monitor, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions from Commissioners? Do we have any public comment?
No one on the line has raised their hand.
There's no one outside and no one on the line, so I will take a motion from a Commissioner, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the KDHE mosquito surveillance pilot project as requested by staff.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 164-20 mosquito surveillance pilot project. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry, five to zero. That is the end of our action items for today. We'll move on to informational items, and we'll start with item number one, COVID-19 update with Jason Tiller, our Health Department Director. Good morning again, Jason.
Good morning again. I apologize you don't have a printout of this, but I wanted to try and update it as much as possible with the most current stuff that we had this morning. And most of this information is, as far as the statistics, comes directly from the KDHE website, so it's all publicly accessible anyway. For Celine County, our total number of tested to date is 713, total negative 692. Total positives, as of last night, 21 confirmed plus four probable. And let me speak for a moment to that confirmed and probable. So, in the early days, which sounds kind of odd to say, since that was really only about a month and a half, two months ago, when widespread testing wasn't available, if there was a case where, say, a spouse was confirmed to have COVID using a lab test, the spouse, say, the husband was, and then the wife became symptomatic, KDHE treated that as a probable case. For all intents and purposes, they assumed that they had COVID-19 since testing wasn't widely available. And so, those, we tracked them and monitored them as such, but since they weren't confirmed cases by laboratory confirmation, those weren't reported. KDHE last Thursday decided to start reporting those, and so now they're showing up in our case counts on their website, which is why there's that small discrepancy as far as when we report confirmed versus probable. We shouldn't have any other probables that come up, since there has been sufficient testing capability, which I'll talk a little bit about in a minute, to be able to test and confirm anybody that is symptomatic or has potentially been a contact. Percent positive of our testings is 3.5%, and that percentage, we want to stay low. Our lab testing rate, however, continues to increase, which is good, is now 13.15 per 1,000. And as more people are tested, then we'll see that rate go up, which is a rate that we do want to see increase, which means we're having more testing happening in the area. To date, hospitalizations were eight, deaths were two, and at this point, out of the rest of the cases, there are only two of them that we are still monitoring, and the rest have essentially recovered at this point. This information, like I said, is available for public viewing on KDHE's website. They were, up until yesterday, updating that seven days a week, but now they're only updating it Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays due to the staff time it takes to compile all that information. An update on the Walmart testing that's been going on in this area. We finally received results over the weekend for the last couple of clinics they've had, and although we did not receive a total number of people tested, because it was from, you know, people from multiple counties around the area, for our county, it was about 100 people that were tested, and all of those results were negative. They are scheduled to be here again Tuesday through Friday this week, and we will see what the weather has to say about whether they can duck that drive-through or not. Right now, as far as testing capacity for COVID, I think that we are looking pretty good. Us, as well as Salina Regional, Salina Family, and Maury Clinic all have testing capacity, and we'll be meeting later on this week or beginning of next week to kind of talk about additional testing strategies as the summer kind of wears on, and if we, you know, do start to see a second wave, as has been mentioned. Our contact tracing capacity right now looks pretty well. I've had four dedicated staff to do contact tracing, which is where, when a person is confirmed positive, they then investigate where they've been, who they've talked to, who they've had prolonged contact with, contact those people to discuss if they've had any symptoms, advise them if they need to quarantine, those types of things. We do have additional capacity if we need it through retired nurses who has worked for us before, as well as trained contact tracers that the state is training and can be deployed if requested through emergency management. Upcoming, I already mentioned the meeting with the providers to discuss future testing, and then we'll continue to monitor the community as we move through the phases of the governor's plan, depending on what she decides. plan, depending on what she decides to do. One last thing on here, you know, our first case was March 29th. Our last case before yesterday was, I believe, April 29th, so we had gone about 12 days since our last case, and then last night, after our press release was published, we did receive a call of an additional positive, and that's currently being investigated right now. That one, I believe, though, well, we'll have more information out later today after the investigation is done, and then pertinent details will be in our 5 o'clock press release. With that, if there are questions?
I have a couple of comments or questions, I guess, in a way. The number that I don't see, I heard you mention it a little bit here today, recoveries, as an example, in Celine County, we have 25 cases identified as COVID, either positive or probable.
Correct.
But what is the number, again, of recoveries?
So it would be, if we add in the probables, then it would be approximately, and not counting the case we had last night, so it would be about 17 recovered.
Seventy, so actually, then we would only have eight active cases in the county?
Not necessarily, because we had two that were deceased, so when we talk about the status, so 17 recovered, two deceased, two that are monitoring, no, hold on, because I wasn't adding in the probables at first, because that recovered, so that would be 21 recovered, two deceased, and two monitoring for that 25, and then plus the one we got last night.
I got lost in the translation there a little bit, but it, the number is really about six active cases, or somewhere five to six, something like that, if you've...
About three, actually.
Three.
The probables, well, I'm sorry, and I probably should have clarified, the probables were all from early March, or mid-March and early April, so they are actually old cases that are already done and gone.
Okay.
So they're not counted.
That's the number I missed.
I'm sorry, I should have clarified that.
Well, that's another number that, from KDHE, that I would like to see from time to time, you know, they're, they've identified 7,000 cases.
Correct.
How many of them are actually active? You know, if you take the, the number of deaths away from that, and the number of people that have recovered, you know, what, what is the number we're really dealing with? And I don't really ever see that number come out, or at least it, if it does, it escapes me, but...
And that's not a number that they've published yet, and that's a number that's widely asked about, and they, and part of it is, the definition of recovered, like many of these definitions, but the definition of recovered especially, has changed significantly, and it continues to kind of fluctuate what it actually means to be recovered as we learn more. Originally, recovered meant that you had two confirmed tests 24 hours apart that were negative, and that quickly became apparent that it wasn't going to be possible to do that, because testing of just symptomatic people was hard to do. And then it became, when your symptoms resolved, but as we learn more, we've seen some people that have had some residual effects from COVID, and so it's hard to say, okay, well, have your symptoms completely resolved? No, you still have some issues going on, was it due to COVID, or is it due to just some potential tissue damage that may have been done by the disease? So that definition of recovered has not really been locked down, which makes it hard for the state, and I think for us to say 100% that this many people are recovered. That's our best working definition right now, is that they have either been more than 10 days since the start of their disease, the majority of their symptoms have resolved, but it's still kind of a working definition at this point.
So in other words, it's not like a, take the cast off of my broken arm, and I can go, go about my regular business?
Right, yeah, we can't do, just do an x-ray and say, nope, it's healed, and you're 100% good to go.
I get it. Okay, also, when Celine County Health Department does a testing on an individual, where, is that a sent to Topeka in a lab, or where does that go, and how long does it take to get the test results?
Okay, as of right now, we haven't been doing any testing, the Health Department hasn't, the primary care providers have. We have testing kits now available that we are planning to use if we have another outbreak, or if we have direct contacts that have to be tested. As far as where the test, or where the sample goes to be tested, it can go to KDHE lab, there are several private labs, like LabCorp and Quest, that can run those tests now, and getting the results back initially was taking anywhere up to 10 days sometimes to get results back, regardless of what lab went to. Now, I think with KDHE, it's probably about 48 hours to get back. The private labs, they've gotten much faster, I think, about coming back with, with results. If the hospital, say, for instance, they test somebody, it gets sent to LabCorp, as soon as LabCorp, for instance, gets a positive, they call the hospital, and the hospital calls us. So there's that reporting mechanism in place. Of course, not as much emphasis put on negative results, those are sent through just kind of the normal lab reporting chain, so that we don't get those asked quickly, because the focus is, of course, getting the positives to us, so that we can then start to investigate. The good thing, though, that has been throughout this, is that when somebody was ill enough to see a provider and to be tested, they were also advised, or at that point, to quarantine, of course, until their results were received, and so that has been extremely helpful, of people just staying home when they're sick, even with the, you know, with some people that may not have been tested for COVID but were symptomatic, just staying home until they were over their illness, and not going to work and spreading it amongst others or in the public, has been extremely helpful overall.
So, in other words, I mean, I guess I had the perception that the Celine County Health Department was the one that was doing the testing, and that is not the case. Those are done at Salina Regional or, or the doctor's office?
Right, originally, when testing started, you had to be symptomatic, and then, because it was still flu season, you had to have a rapid flu test to make sure that it wasn't actually flu, and there's some other testing that had to be done, which most health departments are not set up to do, and we're also not set up to diagnose flu and those types of things, because most health departments, unlike a doctor's office, you know, we don't see acute care. We have, and then again, too, the supplies for testing were greatly strained, so us trying to compete for the primary care providers, where people needed to be seen who were actually sick, was not, you know, not the best strategy either. So us, like many other health departments, focused on doing all the contact tracing, following up with those that were identified in that period while they were waiting on their results, and then letting the primary care handle the bulk of the diagnosing and the testing.
Okay, I appreciate those clarifications. I've kind of hogged the floor here for a little bit, so are there any other questions from commissioners or comments? If not, Jason, thank you for your hard work. I do want to tell the public to, this isn't over by a long stretch of the imagination. Please be vigilant, follow the rules. Next week is going to be Phase Two from the governor's office, and, you know, this is kind of like the cast off your broken arm, this doesn't mean it's over. You've still got to practice the social distancing and everything you can to do your individual part in helping us get past this really, really difficult time, so thanks to everyone for that vigilance. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
We'll move to item number two in our informational items, and that is a budget, 2021 budget request with Central Kansas Mental Health, and that's with Kathy Mosier, Executive Director of the Central Kansas Mental Health. And good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I hear I'm one of the first allocating agencies to start, so...
You are the first.
The first.
Sure. Okay, yes.
I want to introduce you to Erica Green. Pat Canard and Deb Byerly are public education specialists, have retired, and Erica has replaced them, and she's a mental health first aid trainer, so you will see her around the community. I'm going to start with an annual report of our center, tell you what's been going on there, and then I'm going to get into some very county-specific information for you. The first three pages of the annual report, we focus on better access, better quality, and better outcomes for our communities. One of the things that I'm highlighting this year is our school-based services. We've partnered with schools to provide therapists onsite in services to catch those students who are in need of mental health services, who have not been able to access them, either parents' work schedules or transportation issues, those kinds of things. That has been remarkably successful, and your results in Celine County are even better, so I'm going to wait till we get to that, to go over that more. The new, we did get a new medical director. When you come to us for mental health needs, for medication management, you will get specialty-trained staff, they are all MD level or above, so that means they're psychiatrists. We have adult and child specialists. We also, for our new medical director, added a family practitioner. He is well-versed in addiction management, as well as family practice to help us bridge mind and body and integrate care. So we're very excited about that. Our patients have, who have come in this year in survey, have had a 98% satisfaction rating of our center, and another issue to bring to light is that the suicide rate continues to grow nationally, certainly is growing in Kansas, and more so even among our ag culture, but also our students. So some of the things we're doing to address that has been school-based initiatives and partnerships, but also, mental health first aid training is a best practice that we offer the community, to help the community to understand what's going on and get people connected to the, to the resources that they need more quickly, and to have those conversations. A new one we invested in is called ASSIST, it is a suicide intervention and prevention for the community. You know, so often, we know that someone is struggling, but we don't know what to say, we don't want to make things worse, we don't want to put ideas in their head. What we know from research now is that doesn't happen, that's not going to make it worse, it's not going to put a suicidal ideation into someone's head, and so it is better to ask directly, and we teach that, and it helps people practice getting confident and comfortable with those conversations, so that when you see someone in need, a relative, it's happening over Snapchat, what we know is 70% of people who attempt suicide for the first time have not reached out to a professional, but they have reached out to a peer, and we have to equip our community to know how to have a conversation around that and get them connected. So we're excited to bring trainers for that into our community. We also offer 24/7 crisis services, 365 days a year, with a mobile crisis team that responds to anyone, and they don't have to be a patient of our center, and it doesn't matter whether they have the ability to pay or not, we treat everybody. For adult services, we have programs that are community-based for our severely mentally ill population, and we've had some success there this year, particularly with the homeless. 21 patients who were chronically homeless have achieved housing and maintained that housing. One case, in one situation, they are also volunteering and giving back to the community, and they're remaining stable. I don't know if you knew, but the chronic homeless person costs the community 35, about $36,000 a year. We do the same thing with chronically mentally ill children, and so our youth, we increased by 32% this year and served over 800 at-risk youth and their families. Youth today are experiencing more anxiety and depression than ever before, trauma's more common, and it comes in many forms. We now know that bullying is a form of trauma, and so we know better how to treat it. One of the things and best practices that we've incorporated is that we build skills that build resiliency, so that people can cope better with, when bad things happen in their lives. One example is an eight-year-old who had multiple suspensions and refused to do homework. We got a call from a mother who said, "Thank you so much for coming into the school," because I had, I didn't know what to do with my eight-year-old, and she has now been picked for Student of the Month, and then a few months later, again, so she's maintained that, and that's a huge turnaround. That's what we want to see. The next page, on page five, gives you some statistics and demographics. You can see how the total clients we have served has been rising, and we have served over 4,300 this year. The clients served by county, we've served over 120 more Celine clients, and our hours of service have gone up as well. We actually hit a, we broke 101,000 this year, so that's an all-time high, that talks, that supports that the need is there, and it's rising in our community. So the financial summary, this gives you a picture of our revenue and expenses. On the revenue side, 78% of our funding comes directly from client fees, that includes third-party payers. If it's broken down right underneath that, there's a wheel that says the client fees, so it talks about how many have commercial insurance, how many have Medicaid and Medicare, and then 17% at any one time have self-pay, which, these are the uninsured and without the ability to pay, go in this category. Now, I will tell you that of the new patients that came in in 2019, that number was 25%, so we know that that's going up. And when we get, I can also tell you that Celine, out of our patients served, is at 33% uninsured without ability to pay. On our expenses side, you can see that most of our expenses go to our biggest asset, which is our professionals and our behavioral health specialists, which is where that needs to be. We have about an 11% overhead, which is considered very low for a community mental health center. And so what makes us different than any other counselor or provider in the area? We are licensed by the state as a community mental health center, and that makes us different in a couple ways. As a nonprofit, we are your designated local mental health authority. Our revenue is reinvested to develop programs that meet the needs of the community rather than to generate profits. Some of those examples are how we were able to develop, and the board was able to develop the Martin Crisis House for Youth, a pharmacy and lab services for convenience, and school-based services, mental health first aid, assist training for the community. We are directed by a volunteer board who represents the community that's being served. This helps us to stay in tune with, and stay in tune with the needs of the community, and also be accountable to the, to the people that we serve. And Mike is on our board, and we're so glad that we have his expertise there. Judge Jerry Helmer is on our board, and Carol Vire, and Julie. Okay, so the next page is going to give you a snapshot of a lot of our services. This isn't even all of them, but gives you a good idea of what those services are, and some of those do, we know our best practices, but they do not have reimbursement mechanisms, but we know that's the best way to get the best bang for your buck and to give you the best return on your investment. And the next page says what people are saying. This gives you just some things that have come in this year, or in 2019, that people were saying about us. One particular parent said, you know, "Your staff have literally saved my life by being such wonderful sources of support for my kids and helping me to be a more effective parent." And that touches us, and we need those success stories. It keeps us, keeps us going, because our professionals, they hear a lot of traumatic and sad stories during the day, and so we need to focus on those to know why we do this and why it continues to be so important. So now I'm going to move into the county-specific information, and I want to thank you for entrusting Central Kansas Mental Health Center to serve Celine County residents for over 50 years. In return, we achieve our mission with excellence. That's very important to us. We are the local mental health authority, and we serve all residents, whether they are a current patient or regardless of their ability to pay. And what you might not know is that CKMHC is the only resource for Celine County for conducting mental health screens for admission to state hospital. We're also the only resource for providing community-based rehabilitative services for the severely mentally ill adults, which are very much proven to get results beyond therapy. So why are mental health services... So why are mental health services a valuable investment for Celine County? Well, first of all, we expect ourselves to achieve excellent outcomes, utilize conservative spending practices, and provide continuous performance improvement to get the most out of every dollar. And you've been getting a great return on your investment. So what did we do for you in 2019? We kept up with Celine County's growing need. We had a 5% increase in the number of Celine County patients, an 11% increase in youth patients. Out of 101 or 102 hours of services delivered, 74% of those came from, or went to, Celine County residents. Over 4,000 more hours to Celine County than last year. We also provided 169 community trainings and education events to 4,100 participants in your community, including six mental health first aid trainings and three assist suicide prevention trainings in Celine County. We also partner with the sheriff to place a therapist in the Celine County jail. And with that, the original focus, we started this five years ago, and we focused on reduced recidivism. And with that, I'll just do a couple, give you a couple highlights. And if you want the report, I can send that to you. But reducing recidivism has gone up every year, and our success rate in 2019 was 70% of the inmates that we treated. And that was an estimated savings between, figuring that out between the sheriff's staff and our staff, of $417,000. The second outcome that we, when we started this project, was to reduce the need for intensive suicide watch protocols. And we moved from an average of 18.5 days that an inmate would spend in suicide watch before they could return to general population. And for the last four years, we've kept that at two. In two days, they're ready to go back to general population. We estimated that this year as a savings of $50,000. Now, the staff, our staff and the sheriff's staff, worked together and said, "You know, we really need to add a goal here and see how we can do, if we can effect some change in this." So in 2017, they added reducing the frequency. There were too many times where there was a behavioral incident in general population, and so staff would have to go in and intervene. And they called those behavioral write-ups at the jail. Well, they wanted to reduce that, because first of all, there's injuries. Second of all, the risk and liability is sky-high when that happens. And third, none of that is covered under their normal shift. So all the paperwork is done and creates overtime for the jail. So in 2017, 18, and 19, we have reduced the number of behavioral interventions in the general population. And this year was 70%. We have no way of putting a cost on that for you to, we haven't figured that part out, but I wanted to share that with you. Other things that we have done, we've provided respite for families that are parenting high-needs youth, and we increased that by 28%. Access to psychiatric doctors for medication management, we don't use mid-levels, increased 12%. And we placed therapists in nine additional Celine County schools this year. I think we're in a total of 25. Student attendance improved by 88% in that program. Never seen anything like that in an outcome for mental health before. But, so that's pretty amazing. Here, I thought we were going to be taking kids out of class and hurting attendance, and that was going to be a rub with the schools. But apparently, when they leave for a health, for a medical appointment, they don't come back. And so we were actually getting them in and out and back to class. Academic performance improved by 80%. And behavior improved by 77%. So that's been a great program. In addition, when you think about the suicide issue, what we found was when we placed therapists in schools, when they, when they met these students for the first time that were identified to be in need, they found out that they already had a plan to suicide. That was surprising. And we were able to intervene earlier, and we know we're preventing suicides. Suicide statistics are always a couple years behind. So we're very excited to see what the New Year's are coming, are going to say, because we think we're bringing that down. So how is Celine County funding CKMHC? Well, it's attached to a statutory mandate to provide adequate funding for an uncompensated mental health care for those who don't have the ability to pay. Celine County's been providing supportive funding, but was not able to increase us last year. So we absorbed the increased shortfall, because the costs, we have a workforce shortage in mental health, and so the costs continue to rise. The shortfall is based on 17% of our patients who lack the ability to pay, although we know that Celine County was actually at 33%. The cost to provide safety net for all five counties that we serve was 2.4 million. And when you combine state and county combined, we were short of covering the cost by 778,000. The funding hasn't kept up with the demand or the cost of delivering services. And my fear is that we won't be able to sustain this excellent return of investment that you're currently receiving. For comparison, and what we do is we use a per capita, because it kind of makes it apples-to-apples when we're looking at counties. And the average contribution that's given from a county to its CMHC, its Community Mental Health Center, across the state is $7.77 per capita. Celine County allocates $5.20 per capita. And in the chart below, it shows you kind of the last 10 years of what you, how you have funded us. All the funds that are being requested are used to help cover the costs of mental health to Celine County citizens who don't have the ability to pay. We consistently get excellent outcomes, which does defray costs in other county budget areas, jail entry, emergency response, suicide and preventable death, homelessness, et cetera. In addition, the COVID-19 is going to have long ramifications, particularly in mental health and behavioral health. For instance, the rising layoffs. More residents are coming in without insurance even than the 33%. So we can't even measure that yet. But we know that's getting worse, not better. We have a shortfall is projected to be an additional 470,000 on top of the other 700,000 for next year, which does make that current level of service that we're delivering unsustainable. Due to the pandemic, the number of people who require mental health is going up. So as the funding shortfall is getting worse, then the demand is there and they need us. Many families are experiencing heightened stress and unresolved trauma. When you can't attend a funeral and grieve appropriately and work through those issues, it becomes traumatic and unresolved. Loss of jobs, loss of loved ones, parental roles are changing, and they're taking on additional teaching roles. Additional factors such as isolation and the lack of normal coping outlets, reduced access to their normal support systems. An economic downturn always affects mental illness. We know that. History tells us that these factors will greatly increase the incidence of mental health. And we project that we will be the front line of mental health care as people start moving and getting mobile again. As the pandemic declines, as the new healthcare frontline with high demand for mental health services, without additional funding, Celine County can expect that safety net to run out, causing inadequate resources, significant wait times, decreased access to services in schools, increased incarcerations, and strain on law enforcement agencies. Celine County has supported us at the rate of 520 per capita for the last two years. And our board of directors determined the need for at least a 4% increase in 2021. And this was prior, they did this right prior to the COVID-19 emergency. We understand that the county revenue situation may be challenged at this time as well. But just know that our part of the healthcare system is picking up. Our crisis line is blowing up. And we're going to be the ones picking up the pieces as we go forward. So this proposal is the minimum needed to maintain the current level of services, but it's not going to fully cover the increased mental health challenges that lie ahead caused by the pandemic and the economic downturn. So the last column looks at the increase that we're asking for. So I thank the Celine County Commission for recognizing that we are a vital role in the community. You have done a great job with that over the years, and that's very appreciated. And we understand, we appreciate that you understand that mental health also does defray costs in other Celine County budget areas. And we appreciate any additional support that you can give us.
Thank you, Kathy. I assure you that Celine County and the commissioners, we do recognize the role that Central Kansas Mental Health plays, and it is a vital part of our, of our local community. We do appreciate that very much. I want to go back and ask you a question. On page six of your financial summary, it says 4% of your revenue comes from the county. Is that Celine County's is 4%? Or is that all of the five counties is 4%?
That's total, our total revenue as an agency. And 4% of that is through the county.
Through, but five counties or one county?
Five.
Okay. And when you go to these other counties, is there a pro-rata, I mean, you know, a percentage based on, on the population that you asked them for?
Yeah, well, we've been basing that on the per capita. So looking at where we need to get to for a per capita adequate funding. But then we also look at the number of uninsured that we're serving in that area, and compare that and provide you with that information as well.
And you are so very correct that we are approaching, we're in our budget period, and that the COVID is going to play into this pretty heavily before we're done, I'm certain. So we do appreciate your presentation. Any further questions from commissioners?
I have a couple of questions, Kathy. This commission, two years ago, last year, allotted 50,000 to the Sheriff's Department for mental health treatment, which I believe the bulk of that funding comes back into your organization. Is that correct? So actually...
I don't believe it, I'm not aware of it being 50,000.
Okay. I thought it was 20, but I don't...
That's what I thought.
20?
20.
Well, I'll check that. I thought it was a $50,000 amount, but I might be wrong.
I'm pretty sure it was 20, or possibly 30. That's been a long time ago. I can't remember.
It could have been raised, but I didn't know.
I'm certain it was 20.
20,000, that's still, whether, whether we put that into your coffers or give it to the sheriff, and it comes back into your coffers, it's still county dollars that we're spending, correct?
Yes, and actually, with what we've saved the jail, that 400 and some thousand dollars, that is taking that out of it, and that's still the net that we're saving. I will, the other point of that is that we partner with the jail to provide what they ask us for. And we're in the process of looking at strategic planning and what we can do. Right now, there's a space shortage at the jail, so we're kind of projecting into the future as the, as the rest of the jail strategic plan gets figured out.
Right. My thoughts in saying that is that we recognize the importance of mental health treatment, and we recognize how it impacts the jail population. We, we just funneled it over there to make sure those dollars were touching that.
Yes.
And even though it came back through your services.
Yes, and we appreciate that. We offer our services to the jail at cost. That's it. And the hard part with that is that we do need to be able to maintain staff so that you have continuity of care over there. But we under, we believe, we want to partner well, too. And, and we want to be as conservative as possible.
I just say that, because you mentioned that we didn't increase your funding last year. We did indirectly, but you're, you're right. We didn't send the check to you. We just funneled it through the, through the jail.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair? I've been on the board for approximately three years now. I'm still trying to figure out all the services that they provide. But I am so impressed with Kathy in the whole and her team leaders. You're really an impressive group and do a, do a great job. So thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, are any clients turned away for non-payment? For not being able to pay?
No, no. The ability to pay, we have a sliding scale fee based on their ability, but no one's turned away.
No one's turned away.
No denials.
Do you get indigent funds from the state?
A little bit.
Okay. Do you know how much that is? I just, it, you know, I don't need to know today, but we do get some, or you do get some, an amount?
We do get some. And the combined amount, that's why we combine the county and the state together. And that's where our shortfall is still 776,000. Now, the state did increase us last year, and a small amount.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Obviously, you'll be hearing from us. It'll be down, down the road here. But we will be acting and actively participating in our budget proposal from this day forward.
You have a tough job. I appreciate what you do for us.
Comes with the territory, as they say. All right, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number three, which is the county administrator's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. I wanted to touch on four items relatively quickly this morning. First, I'll start with the budget update. As the chair mentioned, Ms. Mosher's presentation was the first of a series of presentations from our allocation agencies that you'll be hearing starting this week and then the next two Tuesdays. After that, we hope to bring all that information back to you at a special commission meeting. I did distribute some expenditure information to the commissioners last week, which I will update for you when we do that special meeting. But this week, I've been focused on the revenue picture. And, you know, while it's not pretty in terms of what the economic impacts of coronavirus have, have done, or have the potential to do to the county, it is very consistent with my prior messages being that we brought more unencumbered cash into this year than what we had budgeted. And so overall, even with an economic downturn, we stand to weather this pretty well heading into 2021. So I'll have more specific numbers for the commission later, but I just wanted to reassure you that I've been looking at that. The second item is just a brief legislative update. The Legislative Coordinating Council met last week, I believe it was Wednesday, and voted to reconvene on May 21st. Reached out to the KAC, and they said, you know, "There's really a divide right now between the House and the Senate. The Senate really wants to take up several major items, while the House really wants to only take up the disaster declaration and one or two smaller things." Given that May 21st is the day the legislature is scheduled to adjourn for the year, there's uncertainty of how they would even go about debating those larger issues logistically. And KAC will try and get out more information as things evolve. But I did get word yesterday, late afternoon, that the House Tax Committee is going to be meeting this afternoon. And as it turns out, both this afternoon and Thursday afternoon. So they may take up SB 294, and I've reached out to Representative Johnson on that. The third item, oh, I guess I actually have five items. The third item is just a reminder on the census. Kansas is doing well relative to other states, and Celine County in particular is a little better than average. But if folks have not filled out their census forms yet, that's something you can do from the comfort of your home. Fourth item, our audit is final. I passed out to the commissioners this morning the required communications to those charged with governance... with governance. At one point in the past, we mentioned that we might want to get our auditors appear to make a presentation in person. We said we were going to talk about that again, and then we let it slip off and didn't talk about that again. So, just following back up on that. And the last thing is that I am scheduled to appear on KSAL's Morning Extra, which is the rebranding of their former Friendly Fire, this Thursday. Be happy to answer questions.
I have none. Well, I do have one. The percentage, sales tax is what percentage of our income?
I don't have the percentage off the top of my head, but it's, our, our budgeted amount for this year was 4.5 million. That is in comparison to 11.5 million in the general fund in property tax. So, it's relatively low for us, but it's still significant.
So, it's, it's basically about 10% of our budget, is that what you're saying? If it was 4 million, 46 million dollar budget?
Yeah, I mean, our total budget across all funds, I believe, was 51 million this year, so it'd be slightly under 10% at 4.5.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? If not, we'll move to item number four, which is commissioners' comments. And I have a comment, a concern, I guess you would say. Next week starts the Phase Two from the governor's standpoint. It has been documented and understood that Celine County or all counties will be able to expand upon those, those restrictions that are being handed down by the state and by, and by the governor's office. And we can, I mean, as an example, if, and I'll just pick on the hair salons, I'm sorry, but I need a haircut, too, by the way, that the governor says they can open up next week. Celine County and other 104 counties, 105 counties, four, would be able to say, we're going to extend that by a week for Celine County. Is, am I correct in assuming that, Phil?
That's correct. Under the current executive order, we can be more restrictive, but not less.
And don't get excited, hairdressers, I'm by no stretch of the imagination, I'm just using that as an example. But the, my point is, as commissioners, this starts next Monday. We haven't, we haven't discussed this. We haven't discussed it one bit. And I'm concerned that, that once we open it up, and then if we try to go retroactive to prior, you know, to the, to the Monday, when we don't even meet till next Tuesday, I'm just a little bit concerned that we haven't talked about it at all. That, that, that gravely concerns me. And, and I don't know whether that's my fault, Mahdi Shadwick's fault, Philip Smith Haynes' fault, the governor's fault, I don't know. But it seems to me, I mean, I listened to the city commission last night, and they, they were approving things and disapproving things and all of those, and I think they did put the caveat in there that, that it depends upon what the county says. But nonetheless, we haven't discussed, somewhere along the line, we need to think about this, I think.
Are you talking about right now, or are you talking about special meeting on Friday?
No, I mean, we don't need to just drop everything and start right now. I'm, I'm trying to light a fire. And I, maybe, maybe the fire doesn't need to be lit. I don't know. That's, I'm giving you the opinion of one commissioner, that it, if I'm going to be looked upon for answers or additional information, and, and, you know, one commissioner can't act on his own, I'm just saying that it, it seems to me like we should be doing something, or at least discussing it.
Yeah, that, I'm fine with that. I'll just maybe start with what I'm hearing on the street, and, and I think, you know, there's obviously two sides to it, and, and we're not going to appease everybody. But what I'm hearing from the street and from friends and from colleagues is, they're comfortable with what the, the governor is doing right now. And so, I have never, I have not been approached by anybody that says, extend this, you know, on your behalf, on Celine County's behalf. I have not had one person say that. Now, that doesn't mean that there's not people out there that think that. I just haven't heard that, so.
Well, I will respond to that a little bit, Mahdi. I travel in a little bit different circle than you, because I'm older than you. And the older people, obviously, are concerned about it. I'm concerned about it.
Right.
But I, I will go back and tell you, I'm, in no way am I thinking, put any tighter restrictions on than what the governor is doing. This is one of those things that, back when I accepted the challenge to be a county commissioner, that I said I would vote the way that the majority of the people wanted me to vote, not the way that I personally felt. And this is one of those times. I don't have a mortgage payment to make, luckily, at this stage in my life, but there are a lot of people out there that have to have that payment, and they need to get to work, and they need to make money, and I understand it. But, you know, we go back to my comments a half an hour ago, we've got to social distance, and we've got to be vigilant on our own to do these things. But I'm, I'm getting out of off, off task here. But this, this commission, somewhere along the line, we need to look at what we're going to do or think about it, or if we're saying nothing, and we're going to go along with what the governor says, I'm okay with that, too, if that's what the majority of this commission thinks. But it's, it just seems like somewhere we should have, or should discuss it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with you. I have concerns and some fears. Maybe that's my age talking, too. Next week or so, we'll, we'll all be up here, I assume. The six-foot social distancing will be a thing of the past. But I, I lean on our, on our county health director to be setting out these guidelines that, to present to us to follow. I haven't heard him outside of the recommendations of the state, or with any concerns, speak to us so that we can make a decision. I mean, he pretty much will make the decision. We can override it or, or whatever, but I'd look for him for the guidance, not so much the group of us.
And, and I agree with you. And, and maybe that's where I'm coming from, because, but ultimately, the decision is ours as, as a commission. Ultimately, it's there. And if, if we are looking for him for some more guidance, we should have been saying so. That's what I'm saying. Somewhere along the line, and I'll, I'll, you put it right on my shoulders if you want, because I've stayed at home with my head in the sand, so to speak. So, perhaps, perhaps it's my fault as being the, the commission chairman and the leader, that I should have been doing this. But I'm, I'm doing it a little late, but I'm doing it, so.
Mr. Chair, I feel I've been informed, talking to our administrator, and the press releases that John Q. Public receives. I've even listened to the governor's speech a couple of times via telephone. And I, in other words, I, I haven't been sticking my head in the sand. I've been aware of what's going on with the information that's available out there. So, I personally have no reason to do anything different than what's been recommended from the governor. And if you're proposing to discuss it, we can always set up a meeting and have the powers be Mr. Jason, and...
Well, let me take it a step further. I, I know that there was, or has been, a meeting scheduled, or was a meeting, between community leaders, Chamber of Commerce people. I think Phil was involved with it, maybe, last, was it last week or this week? There's sometime, there's another, there's been a, a, a meeting of these people of what are we going to do when Phase Two opens up? But I haven't, I don't know anything about it, other than what the chamber sent out. So, I mean, those are the kind of things that I think we should be, we're doing it now, so to speak, Mike. Exactly. I know what the governor's issues have been, but we haven't discussed it as five commissioners. And as far as the meeting goes, that, was, Phil, correct me, was there a meeting, or is there a meeting, or is there something scheduled?
County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes, last Thursday, the emergency manager convened a meeting of folks, including some folks from various sectors of the business community, representatives of hair salons, small businesses, large businesses, and discussed, you know, whether it, they thought that there was a call, folks from the medical community as well, whether they wanted to recommend to the health officer and ultimately to the commission, doing anything different. And, you know, as, as the commission has talked about amongst yourselves this morning, there is diversity of opinion in the community. Some folks think we're not opening quickly enough. Some folks think we're opening too quickly, and that certainly was reflected in that group. But ultimately, they didn't make any sort of recommendation that, that we could bring to you all. Yeah, and Commissioner Wees, I'll correct you on one thing. Social distancing remains a part of the governor's plan for all phases, including Phase Out. So, we need to...
I put that out more as a question than a statement.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me cut to the chase a little bit, but I think a week ago or so, that there was a headline in the, on the front page of the salon journal that says, "The county intends to do this." Well, to me, the county is, is governed by the commissioners, and the commissioners didn't know anything about it, or hadn't said anything. So, I mean, I'm not saying that's somebody within our organization's fault. That was a misquote on the part of the, the local newspaper.
It might have been, because I remember when Jason Tiller said that he did not plan on asking for any further restrictions than the governor had. I think that that's where the county came in.
Yes, yes.
And so, you are right. And I'm happy to talk about it anytime. Right now, and any, I don't think you've done anything wrong. I just...
No, nor do I, nor do I.
But I've always just taken that as direction from Jason from the get-go, that he's comfortable with it. And speaking of what Commissioner Wees thought, is, is, you know, I do, I do respect his opinion. So, but if, but if we need to discuss it further, I'm happy to do that.
Well, I'll cut to the chase here. Like I said, I, I would like to form a consensus of opinion among the five of us, that it is going to be our intention, or it's not going to be our intention, to expand upon whatever that comes down from the governor's office. At this time, I, we're going to follow, we being Celine County and the commission, are going to follow the guidelines that are passed down from the governor's office, and we are not going to further complicate that or expand upon those. And, and I would like a consensus if that is in agreement with the five commissioners.
You know, my, my understanding in, in the public and the divide is out there. Again, we're not going to please everybody, but the divide is generally split between those whose income have not been affected and those whose income have been affected.
No doubt.
And so, you know, it's, it's tough for me, because I, I don't want anybody to get sick, and, and, you know, and, and don't want to do anything. Although, if you're asking my opinion, I am comfortable with where the governor's stance is right now.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
And I'll just comment, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Sparks here, is that I've, I've believed from the, the get-go on this whole thing, is that we've, we valued the input from Jason Tiller in our guidance, and that is come from the, the state governor's office. And with all the emails we get on a daily basis, is that I've just felt that we, pretty much, as a group, and I'm, I'm just, and there again, I'm just talking about myself, I've always felt that this is the way we're going, and this is the way we've accepted it, is going by the governor's thoughts, and, and wherever they've decided to go, that's how we've done it. So, my, my comment would be is that I, I feel very comfortable with going along with Mr. Tiller and, and on the guidance of the, the governor, and, and staying with that, that path.
Mr. Chairman, it seems, I personally have been besieged with information, and I cannot correlate and go through all of it. I mean, 10, 12 emails a day from different organizations, and I admire Commissioner White for being able to decimate all that information and make sense of it. But, correct me here again if I'm wrong, but I believe the governor is passing it down to the county health departments. She has her guidelines, but it's still, do the county health department still have say-so within their county? Is that not correct?
Well, it's the county commission that has the say-so. The county health department can make recommendations. Is that, am I correct, Phil?
County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes, sort of. So, this is a public health emergency. So, the public health officer has unilateral authority under state law, given that this is a public health emergency, to take protective measures. The county commission, however, also sits as the board of health. So, you are the ones who select the health officer, and you can overrule the health officer. So, yes, I, it is ultimately your, the ultimate authority does rest with the commission, but the health officer could take action without coming to you and asking in advance if he feels it's warranted because of the health information.
I, I guess I'm confused then again. Well, let's just use the, the, the health clubs or some so forth. If, if the health department determines that they need to be closed another week, he can say to close them another week, and that's, that's a done deal?
If there is a public health reason to take that action, yes, the public health officer can take that action. The commission, again, acting as the board of health, could override that. I mean, I, Mr. Tiller was just here, and, you know, I think, I don't believe he has any intention, from all the conversations that we've had, of, of exercising any of that authority. But, I mean, if, if we suddenly got 400 cases tomorrow, right, that would, I think, change the opinion of everybody in this room, potentially, about, you know, Celine County is in a pretty fortunate position, all things considered. I mean, I don't want to minimize the fact that we've had, you know, 25 ill people in the community and two people who've passed away from this. I mean, that's tragic, but compared to, you know, many of the counties, the urban counties, the meatpacking counties, I mean, we are in a good situation. And I think both Jason and the folks that Jason has been seeking advice from, recognize that, that that's where we are at this point, and there's no reason to go beyond what the governor ordered at this time.
I'm almost concerned that I brought it up. It's, I seem to be a little bit more cloudy on it myself now than, than I have ever been. But I would, I guess, again, I'll just, if, if everyone feels the same as I do, and then the consensus being that we will not expand upon the governor's orders, that is our intention as of this day. Is that everyone else's contention?
Yes.
I see no opposition to that, so that will be our position that we will take until there's something, information that, that tells us to do something differently. So, I, I want to have that off my chest before next Monday opens up, and I haven't said a word to you. That's, that's, that's where I'm coming from. So...
I, I'll clarify my, my standing. Mine is to follow the guidance of the county health director. And if he embraces what the governor says, I'm, I'm going to follow his lead. He knows Celine County better than the governor does, I believe, as far as their health needs. So, I plan on following his recommendations.
Well, I would agree with that, but right now, that hasn't come down, so that's what I'm saying. So, we will move on. I've beat that enough. Any announcements from anyone? Looks like we have an executive session before us.
Happy to make the motion, just need to know on how much time.
Yes, Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator. So, there are two requests for executive session this morning. The first is for attorney-client privilege. Attendees would be the commissioners, myself, the deputy administrator, county counselor, and Rick Lamer. And this would be to discuss contract negotiations regarding the expo... contract negotiations regarding the Expo Center lease. And I believe it'd be good to start with about 15 minutes on that one.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the attorney-client privilege exemption to the Kansas Open Meeting Act and reconvene in 15 minutes or 10:47.
Which, that clock, is it 10:47 by the clock that's in our room, which is a little fast, so.
Okay.
Okay, but by that clock, so 15 minutes. Is there a second? It's been moved in second that we move into executive session to discuss the attorney-client privilege for Expo Centers.
Mr. Chair, is there anticipated action in these two executive sessions? Or are the information only...
There's a possibility. There's always a possibility. When coming out, I'm going to say there's a possibility there could be action, but that doesn't mean there's going to be.
Fair enough.
So, and we have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are in executive session.
Do we stay in this room for...
Okay, we are back into, out of executive session with no action taken at this time, and we will, I will go to Commissioner Shadwick.
Mr. Chairman, I move we extend our executive session for another 15 minutes and reconvene in this room at 11:07.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
Second to that.
It's been moved in second that we go back into executive session for the same purpose as the previous one. And all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We'll go back into executive session for 15 minutes. Okay, we are back into regular session from the executive session. There was no action taken. And at this time, we will be looking for a motion to go into an additional executive session. And Commissioner Shadwick, if you'd like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the employee, employer negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act and reconvene in 15 minutes or 11:22. Is that right? Nope, 11:27.
11:27.
11:27.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we move into executive session for 15 minutes for employer, employee negotiations. Reconvene in this meeting room in 15 minutes. We're in executive session. We are back into regular session. I will announce that there was no action taken. There being no further items on our agenda for today, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adjourn today's meeting. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.